To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have the approval of the January 3rd, 2012 regular meeting minutes.
I move.
I'll say. All who are in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Guys have public comments? Any public comments?
No.
Okay. Presentations. Birdie Andy, will you go first?
What? Yeah.
We're still waiting.
Oh, okay.
Ed McDevitt.
What do you want to hear first? You want to hear a little brief food service?
Yep.
Okay, let's go. Yes, I can. I can. So I'll just follow however you guys want me to go.
This is good news about our universal food service program.
Diane and I, I mean Trish, we're pretty happy now. I can't bring all the news. So we put this together today to kind of see, get a feel, where we're at on our food service program.
Review this one.
Okay. You're not going to just...
No. Now I want to, I'll give you a...
Explain it, please.
So what I've done is I've put together all of our revenue that I have collected in so far. So, and of course I did my lines and my columns, said, "Let's start with column B." Now that's old bills that we have collected, okay? So we're, even though I've received it as revenue, I'm not going to use it in my calculations to see what our standing is on the universal food service program. But it's in revenue. The next column is non-reimbursables. That's money we get from adults and Southwestern and different programs that we provide meals to. The next column is à la carte. That's just kind of some miscellaneous little meals that Diane serves. The other one is some other miscellaneous little items. And the next one is your federal reimbursements. Here's where we make our money in our food service program. We probably ought to stop here and spend a few minutes. I should have brought that report that shows that our federal reimbursements are up considerably. And that's what's going to cover all this free and reduced lunch. And, you know, we had from the get-go tried to get all of our children to participate in this program. We think it's a great program. We want our kids to be healthy. We want them to be fed. We think it does improve their learning abilities. So I think the program's working really good from everything that I hear. And I know this federal reimbursement money is up. Even though we're not going to be collecting that first column, the centralized food service, we're going to be making up for all that in the federal reimbursements. Now, go over to column H. Now that's how much the county has had to put into the food service program so far. So what happens, and Diane is here if I get this wrong, she's the food service expert. So what happens is every month, these children go through the line and they go through our Premiere computer program and generate some numbers. And then Diane creates a bill. And on that bill, there's the federal reimbursement portion, and then there's the county paid portion. So column H is the amounts that Diane has determined that we have to put into the food service program. So so far for September, October, and November, we have put in $185,000. Okay? So for my food service program, regular food service program, I took in $864,459 so far. We also have a child and adult care food program that is after hours...
That's our suppers.
Suppers that we're doing, that has generated 13,900. So the total of all of those is $878,000 revenue. Okay, am I good? Questions to that point?
One.
Okay.
On the county paid portion, now is that the monies that have been collected from students and all, or is that county influx?
That's influx, and that is that old sponsor's contribution, as you two would know it. Okay? Sponsor's contribution, okay, that's what that is.
Okay, now, how the monies that they collect are, they reflect...
We don't do that. We don't charge for nothing anymore. It's all free.
Okay, for this year, okay. Now, in the typical...
The 185 that the county would be doing, would be putting into the program, is actually the exact amount that we would be billing if we were doing the program as normal.
Okay. So if we were getting money from students and adults, that's this where we go?
That would be that. Right. So that's an exact offset or centralized billing, which we collect very little of.
Birdie, why is October federal reimbursement so much higher than the other month?
Diane, do you have an answer?
For supper?
No, federal reimbursement.
For federal? Because the October would take in some of the reimbursement that we brought in for August and September because they're a month behind.
Okay, so everybody's at $878,000 in revenue. Okay? If you go down, you're going to see the negative 11,468. So I told you I was going to pull out the centralized food service billing to kind of see where we're at. So that gives me a net of $866,965. Now, what they want us to do is compare food costs and all other expenses, pull out labor. Don't look at labor right now. Just look at all your operating costs excluding labor. So as of December the 31st, we had pay. And that's where the little twist can come in, actual payment and what's hanging out there to be paid. But I think we're pretty much caught up...
We are.
With our bills. We think they're all caught up. So we are, we feel pretty comfortable that our, all expenses including labor is $554,617. So taking all that into account, we're ahead $312,000 before labor cost. Now, if I, if you go on down, the labor costs, now this labor cost is as of the end of December. So labor, we've paid out $561,000. And after labor is $248,000 in the red. But, now, I haven't put in my sponsor's contribution. So really, sponsor's contribution is going to pretty much take care of our labor costs. And I had projected to put in for labor cost, for pretty much labor, a million dollars. So, you know, if I look at labor, we're halfway through. And so if that other half a million plus, give or take, will cover us through the end of the year. I mean, I think we'll be pretty good shape.
We think we'll break even on this.
I think, I think we are.
I really just sort of counterintuitive. If even more kids are cost-wise, we're...
But you're getting, it's that federal money. Where before, and you know, for you, Carol, I know you've heard me preach this for years, you know, we've been going through this motion of billing and billing and billing, and nobody pays. And a good portion of those people that we are billing should be on free and reduced, but they wouldn't, there was no reason for them to fill out the application because, you know, they didn't have to. The kid's got to eat. And we generated a bill, went and mail, we did through, went through the motions, but there was never any money coming through. So then I just kind of went back and looked, since we started, since I've got real numbers with centralized food service, you know, our uncollectibles is about $700,000. So, you know, it's been draining on us all this time. So I mean, I'm, I'm real, real optimistic about the program.
Now, this resulted in being one of the pilot programs on this, right? Now, so those monies are, how, how, were they, did that increase our amount of federal reimbursement? Is that how?
Yes. That's where we're going to make up our, our money, is the federal reimbursements.
I wish I would draw that report.
Also, we're one of those counties in this pilot program.
Yes, 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 yes.
So what is the participation rate now?
Right now, overall, we're at 83 percent for breakfast, overall county. And our, our target was 85. So we're real close. But keep in mind, field trips in December really hurts. But overall, for lunch, we're at 84, and our projection was 80. So over the course of time, our adding of days in August really, really helped quite a bit, and no snow days.
That's right.
You know, so participation is pretty well consistent across the board. And so that makes it a little bit easier for us to, for food cost and purchasing as well. As long as we stay at that level, you know, things are kind of smooth. Once they, once they drop on a certain day, it can kill us because we're projecting 85 percent eating, and it's 72 or lower, then we have extra food on hand, or it's already been prepared, or whatever, so.
I think it's a really great...
Yeah, and the thing that everybody keeps hearing me say is participation is a key to making this successful. So we want every child to go through that line for breakfast and for lunch. If we can keep that up and keep our participation going, then, you know, I just think it's a great program for our kids.
What's the projection federally for this program? Do you know, Diane? Are they saying...
Well, we're going through some studies right now to see if the, if the, for the program to continue the way it is, or with the food costs going up, we're in escalation negotiations right now as we're speaking. I have that next week. We're right now looking at about a 13 percent jump in food costs from now until the close of the school year. So we really have to watch projections are based on last year. So as the projections for produce and how things come into our vendors, that's how the escalation goes for the rest of the school year.
And it is a continuous effort on the principal, the teacher, the cook's part to make sure those students continue to eat. And of course, we've adjusted the time and the way that the breakfast is delivered in order to accommodate more students, and that's their purpose, feed more students and at least break even, you know? So with that participation up, that's what's causing that federal reimbursement increase, so it's great.
Now, let me make one other point here. If you just look at that 312,000 that are net before labor, pull out the 185,000 that we pushed in, and we're still ahead. So, I mean, I've, you know, I've been wrong before, but I'm real happy with it, and spending our children. Okay, questions on this? All right, now, Mr. Matthews, would you like for me to sit and do personnel later? Yes, Ms. Lucas would like for me to do that.
Val's blanket shoe.
David's here with Megan, so we're traveling together.
Here's your next...
This is Mr. Ferguson. Yes, Bruce. And Brenda did this this afternoon, but then, as schedules go, what should we say? It's all right. As schedules go, and of course, when we look at superintendent's schedule, we look at our principal's schedules, we look at board meeting schedules, and on and on, we tried real hard to identify dates for the meetings out in the schools. And we wanted to hit around spring break and, you know, a lot of other times when, we want to make sure it's times when people can be present. So this is what I would describe as a tentative schedule, but one that we, we plan to move forward on unless something unusual comes up and we would need to change. And so the first meeting there, we'll convene the CEFPI, or PE committee for the comprehensive plan. And of course, David had quite a bit of experience working with that last time. You want to share any thoughts about what you see happening there?
Well, I think that that's a good group to start with. And I think that they had a lot of energy toward the end of that process, and they were real excited about what they'd accomplished. And I think that'd be a good group to start with on this, on this committee. I know a lot of them have asked questions about what's going on with that, this and that and the other, from time to time, when I see them out. So I think that's a good group to start with. I think we'll go to the, to the school meetings after that.
Now, some of those people that were originally on the committee, they may not be able to be, for whatever reason, on there this time. We would certainly welcome anyone that you feel would fit on that committee, and certainly the superintendent, as we move forward, we'll add a few people to the old committee. And, but we're starting with a group that, you know, they're familiar with the current plan, and, and so we're not starting from zero, which is a good thing.
But you haven't communicated with those people yet?
No, no, no.
No, we just came up with the dates today. And then you folks are welcome to participate in that as well, in terms of that process as it goes through, go to any of those meetings that you feel you'd like to participate in.
Now, what meetings do you want to do now?
Any, any of those other meetings.
Yeah, even the CEFP committees for the comprehensive plan, you know, if you want to come to those, great.
That's one of my questions here. I wasn't sure what these were. These were like board meetings? Were these, we were going to get input, what the committee was, or...
Now, these are meetings out of each school. And we want to go to each school and make sure that anyone in that community that wants to come and talk about their school can come and share their best thoughts. And so the process would be, we would gather all that information, and then we would share that with the county committee. And then, once that committee comes together with ideas about what should take place, then of course that comes to the board. But we also want to make sure the board has opportunity during that process, too.
I mean, but if we attend under that type of system, then we're just there as everyone says, as a...
Right, you're not there as a board, you're there as, as just a citizen, listening to what's going on and hearing other people's input. Because at the end of the process, we actually compile everything that the committees talk about, and that each school group talks about, submitting that to you as a board, and then you make the decision as to what project, prioritizing projects. And at that time, we'll have financial information that we put together with that for each project.
So that's the reason I wanted to, just want to clarify that, because if we were there as a city board, it would be different than us being there just like... What, even our authority, you know what I mean? Just like everybody else at that...
Well, early on, we just want to make sure everybody in the community has a chance to share their best thoughts.
Okay, at the end of all these meetings, when you share all the information with the CEFP, will then they come up with a revised plan to present to the board?
Yes, that's correct. But I do think it's important for, for the board to know that, you know, anywhere during that process, you can, you can have input. I mean, and frankly, we'll try to keep you advised as we go through. We will also have a record from every meeting. Any suggestions given, we'll have that written down and be able to present that to you in a format so at least you can peruse all of it.
We can give that information to Jeff and superintendent, and then you folks can, and they can disperse it to you however you see fit. Keep you informed and updated as to what's going on.
And we will continue to work with your staff. We certainly appreciate superintendent always being engaged with this process. And then, of course, Jeff, he's our go-to guy, you know, we, we, and then we have a meeting that next month, we'll be meeting with principals. And we're going to encourage the principals, make sure that you have somebody from your community, parents and staff, that come out to those meetings and share your best thoughts. And so hopefully, at the end of this process of the community meetings, and we pull all that together, anyone would have had an opportunity to share. And then, of course, some difficult decisions will need to be made. There's always more ideas than there is money. But we'll, we'll do the best we can with it.
So we can put these out on the marquee, marquings in the different schools?
Oh, about the meetings?
Yeah, about the meetings.
Our website.
Websites, send a note on, call home on the, at all these classes, whatever it's called.
Again, we feel good about these dates, but if there's, if you look at this and you look at their calendars and some problem, let us know, and we'll tweak it.
Let me ask you one more thing. So after the committee submits to the board their recommendations, at some point, you all will work with the figures of, and monies, monies that are available and what's feasible and all.
Right, that's what we typically do, is we'll submit whatever the committee comes up with to you. And then we will also submit to you a list of projects, those projects, and put the financial numbers, all, all the dollars to each project. And then it'll be up to the board to select how the bond is put together. You know, what projects can prioritize, that's one thing. And we can come up with different scenarios, you know, and work with you.
We've got a couple of people that are supposed to be here, but if you want us to dance, we could do that.
No, he can't.
They, they should be here shortly.
You'd hurt yourself.
It's actually the first two administrative items, for bond council and financial budget, those folks aren't here yet. They're on their way. I've spoken to both of them, so I don't know how you want to handle that.
Well, why don't we just, we just skip that. You want to do the show, go ahead, go to finance. Let's go ahead and do finance. Birdie.
Okay.
It's Birdie's show.
I'm telling you. And Steve, you wonder why I was in line? Okay, what I want to talk to you guys about is personnel, and basically Trish and I are going to try and show them we'll work on this.
We will go into executive sessions.
Okay.
Should we, we just do the schedule, what are we doing?
Oh, you just want to meet with that one?
Yeah, it's scheduled inside, yeah.
All right, so finances, we have invoices of $578,881. And I do have all the invoices here in case you want to look at them afterwards.
Is that, is that '06?
'56.
Okay.
And then we have a revision to salary schedule 18 to include middle track, or middle school track and field coaches, and to approve the posting. And that's all we have on finance.
I have a quick question. Looking at the revised salary schedule, I guess my question is just, why $1,500? I mean, where did that figure come from? For each coach, it's $1,500 at the high school. My question is, like, tennis is a thousand, volleyball's a thousand, some of these other are, now, I guess, where do we get the figure, $1,500?
It's actually $750.
She's looking at the current secondary rate.
Oh, well, $750 is secondary assistant. Now, middle school is $750.
Was that established when you resolved this?
Yeah, we've already established it.
That was established, yeah, years ago.
Okay, so we're just going back to the old salary schedule that we once had.
Right. The only thing we've done here is just added the middle school track coach position. That's all, one thing has changed.
It's on the bottom of the...
I put one $1712 down there on that line. We didn't change anything else.
It's really, you just added the middle school.
Now, in regarding that, I'm, I'm...
Yes, okay.
Are there going to be, there aren't assistant track coaches?
At the middle school.
At the middle school, yes.
Would be a track coach that would be for boys and girls, and then a volunteer coach?
Well, I mean, there aren't on the salary schedule any assistants. So it's just a head track coach, right? Now, as far as which positions are going to be posted, you said this would lead into being posted. Are we posting one at each school, or are we seeing if there's interest first, or what?
We, we actually had this discussion today, trying to figure out, should we, because we know at Hamlin that there is an interest, but we don't know at the other middle schools if there is an interest. But if there is an interest, then we have to, we would have to post.
I understand. That's why I'm saying, we know Hamlin came and asked, but as far as the other schools, you're going to make sure that they want to do it before you post the job, right?
Absolutely, yes, yes.
Well, we could, we could post a job and put a limit on it, and it had to be a certain amount of number of kids participating.
I'd rather see that, because they don't have a chance and maybe get started at the same time.
Well, that way, I know, yeah.
They all start out...
But we have to put a number of kids...
Is there a number, is there a limit on where track and field?
Not the number of...
One, if there's one.
One?
Well...
Who'd come up with that number?
If one kid participates in any event, that's your track team?
I mean, I don't know. I mean, that does make sense.
But that doesn't necessarily mean that we...
That doesn't make sense to me. I mean, I mean, we...
That's what Mr. Snyder shares with me.
Hey, you need to change the law, boy.
We expect at least 10 or 15.
Well, that's what I mean. I don't think we're bound to run.
I don't either. I don't think we have to use a coach for only one child, fifth grade.
Why don't we just see if there's any interest in the other schools? Because there might be more interest. There is interest, yeah. That's no joke.
And we, we can move with that tomorrow, because we're having a principal's meeting, and we can have them to, you know, start that, you know, immediately, find out.
They got like Jesse Owens out there, $150.
You don't want to deny it, future athletes.
So that's all for finance. If you have any more questions? You have a motion for finance?
No.
All who are in favor of approving the finance, say aye. All opposed? Guys have it. Let's move to public comments. Mr. Butcher?
Thank you, sir. I did, thank you. I didn't need much. I just wanted to come and say hi for one thing, and thank you for all the hard work you do. I know what public service is about. It ain't easy at times. But number one thing, the volunteering I've done at the, the grade school at, at Hartz, and I commented on the road so much with you and everybody else, wiped my way out. I felt like I was meddling in that, not thinking about it. With the entryway and stuff that I'd made some suggestions for, I'm not an engineer, and they've already got it paid for and done, so, but it'll be a great entryway, one-way the way they got it. But I didn't want you to think I was meddling in any of that stuff.
We appreciate your help.
Well, it was, it was tough on Monday, but by Wednesday it kind of got leveled out. But that's, brings us back to the volunteering part. I want to ask the board if you could look into something to encourage more volunteers. And I'm just going to throw one idea at you that I've been thinking about, and I don't know whether it might work or not, but all the schools don't need volunteers, but they're good to have, even if they just police the grounds, as we know of. But the safety of the children's what I have in mind more than anything. But your volunteer fire departments is always struggling, and the schools are struggling for volunteers. And I was thinking, maybe if we could get with them somewhere and other, and ask, or look into some kind of program, see if they would ask one of their volunteers to rotate a week here, rotate a week there. And on the flip side of that, maybe the public can see the volunteer, for, for, it's always struggling anyway for finances, and maybe encourage the public and the parents to, to make it noteworthy that the volunteers are helping, maybe they could help, help the volunteers a bit more. That's one suggestion. And I just, like I said, I just like to ask the board to kind of look into some kind of program to get us some more volunteers out there. And especially, and another thing, my grandson's with me today, he helped me up at Duval first three years ago when we started, had a lot of trouble. He, he was very excited every morning, maybe we could get some kind of program, get the children involved, the older children, that just hold the door open for the smaller ones or whatever, you know? And I noticed in some of the counties, Canola County's got a safety patrol program for some of the schools, for children, give them a little best and participate with them. Maybe they can grow into it when they get it to be parents themselves, do, look back and volunteer. That's all I need. Thank you. Thank you for your, thank you for your...
I was just going to say, maybe having principals be one thing, you might suggest to the principals, again, to remind them, you know, to try to seek more volunteers. And with the department part of your suggestion, perhaps they can just go through our program to become a volunteer.
Right, yes, that's, that's what I'm getting at.
And so that they would be legal, you know?
Yeah, and, you know, we...
The ayes have it. Let's move to public comments. That's someone that, Mr. Butcher. Do you have a comment? We'll just go ahead and do public comments. Thank you, sir.
I did, thank you. I didn't need much. I just wanted to come and say hi for one thing and thank you for all the hard work you do. I know what public service is about. It ain't easy at times, but, number one thing, the volunteering I've done at the grade school at Hartz, and I commented on the road so much with you and everybody else, wiped my way out. I felt like I was meddling in that, not thinking about it. With the entryway and stuff that I'd made some suggestions for, I'm not engineering it, they've already got it paid for and done, so, but it'll be a great entryway, one way the way they got it, but I didn't want you to think I was meddling in any of that stuff.
We appreciate your help.
Well, it was, it was tough on Monday, but by Wednesday it kind of got leveled out. That's, brings us back to the volunteering part. I want to ask the board if you could look into something to encourage more volunteers. And I'm just going to throw one idea at you that I've been thinking about, and I don't know whether it might work or not, but all the schools don't need volunteers, but they're good to have, even if they just police the grounds, as we know of. But the safety of the children is what I have in mind more than anything, but your volunteer fire departments is always struggling and the schools are struggling for volunteers. And I was thinking, maybe if we could get with them somewhere and other and ask or look into some kind of program, see if they would ask one of their volunteers to rotate a week here, rotate a week there. And on the flip side of that, maybe the public can see the volunteer forest, well, it's always struggling anyway for finances, and maybe encourage the public and the parents to, to make it noteworthy that the volunteers are helping, maybe they could help the volunteers up there more. That's one suggestion. I just, like I said, I just like to ask the board to kind of look into some kind of program to get us some more volunteers out there. And especially, and another thing, my grandson's with me today, he helped me up at Duval first three years ago when we started, had a lot of trouble. He, he was very excited every morning, maybe we could get some kind of program, get the children involved, the older children, just hold the door open for the smaller ones or whatever, you know. And I noticed in some of the counties, Canole County's got a safety patrol program, some of the schools, the children, give them a little best and participate with them. Maybe they can grow into it when they get to be parents themselves, too. Look back and volunteer. That's all I need. Thank you. Thank you for your, thank you for your...
I was just going to say, maybe if we, having principals meetings, one thing you might suggest to the principals, again, to remind them, you know, to try to seek more volunteers and with the department part of your suggestion, perhaps they can just go through our program to become a volunteer.
Right, yes, that's what I'm getting at.
And so that they would be legal, you know.
Yeah, and, you know, we asked a lot from our volunteer fire departments and they always come, they always come forth. I think if we, if we ask them, especially with the board, you guys get with it and bring them in and ask them, you know, Jim Odak is easy to work with and people like that, you know. I think that helps, I really do. And then, like I said, maybe it would encourage the parents to help them, you know, keep them going. They struggle also, you know. But I'll be around, I'll be in, I'll be in your house of documents for the next year, I will still be in there in January, so anything I can do to help with it or come to encourage people, I will if I can. And I thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move to our administrative section.
We now have Ed David from Bowles Rice is here, as well as Marie Presiosso from Raymond James.
Do you all like to step forward? Do you have anything you want to talk about?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm not sure exactly what you want to hear from us. We're more than happy to answer questions, talk in general terms, if you have specific issues. Hopefully, between, among actually Marie, Joe Nasef, also from Raymond James and myself, we'll be able to answer any questions you have or at least give you some ideas about how we get the ball rolling.
Could you just give us an overview of your, your function?
Yeah. I probably have to start by saying something that pains me, because lawyers always like to be in the lead and pushing and what have you, but at the early stages, several of your professionals are actually ahead of us, your architects that you're working with and working with you to develop and design the program. And then the next thing we start doing is, after you get that and you know where you're going, working with, you know, the taxpayers and the needs that you have in the school system, Marie and Joe and their folks work at sizing, looking at, you know, what it is that's needed, how you go out there, how you anticipate what the pricing will be. Once we're working along that way, and whether or not we're going to have SBA money or money from other sources, then that's sort of where I step in for the first time and from my standpoint take a lead. And that's putting together what's called the bond call. And it's a multi-page, I think I sent Jeff one, a sample of it. There's, there's no great magic to them, they just take a little bit of time to have them conform to the specifics of the project, and that's where the ballot is. It's where you put the information that an informed electorate needs in order to vote. And there were provisions, if we're going to be closing schools or consolidating schools in any way, you can put that in the ballot. And in the bond call, by doing that, by statute, if the taxpayers see fit to pass the bond issue, then you don't have to have the closure hearings and the merger hearings that, you know, are normally something you would otherwise have to do. Once the taxpayers have approved it, we work with Marie and Joe in putting together an official statement, POS, it's called preliminary official statement, which is a document that talks about the bonds, the Lincoln County school system, the project that we're going to do, gives the background and the finances and the county itself, so that we can go out and get bids from other brokerage firms. General obligation bonds are done on a bid basis. And then we get the bids in, we hope we get good bids. Marie again steps in and Joe, and they do an evaluation of it at a special board meeting. It's usually done at around noon time, because when the markets are open, we get the bids. And assuming we get one that is acceptable, meets the needs, then the hard work begins. And that's where I finally do something. And that's getting the documents ready to close the bond issue. We put together the final, we do the purchase agreement, the necessary disclosures, getting a bond for each series, getting opinions that their law will be checking, dotting the i's, crossing the t's. And then the good news is closing and funding so that we have the money for our projects. That's a three-minute, minute summary.
Yeah. As a financial advisor for this bond issue, what, I'm with Raymond James, Marie Presiosso and Don Nasef, we're both with Raymond James. I've been doing this since nineteen eighty-four and Joe's been doing it since, what, nineteen ninety-eight? So you have two experienced people who've been through a lot of bond issues and, you know, last year or so they've been very successful. We did five, five paths last, you know, in a member two years ago, which we did the bond issues last year in two thousand and eleven. But basically, what we do, what we're going to help you with, is you, of course, have to decide what you want to do and the cost with your architect and what the people want and what you're willing to put on the ballot. What we help you do is, one of the things that you have to put on the ballot is the maximum amount of the bonds that you're going to issue. So if it's twenty million or thirty million or ten million, whatever it is, you have to determine what that maximum amount's going to be. And, you know, if you're going to get SBA money or match or however that's going to work, but for the bond issue, you have to put that. You also have to put the maximum length of time that you want to have that bond issue outstanding, whether it's, you know, ten years or fifteen years or twenty years, you can go up to thirty-four. Most school boards go around fifteen to twenty years. So that's usually seems, seems to be the spot that they like, you know, fifteen years or twenty years, but that's totally, we've had some go longer, we've had some go shorter, that's, that's where a lot of them do it. But you have to tell the voters the maximum amount of years and also the maximum interest rate. And, you know, whenever we put that maximum there, it's a little, it's, we look at what rates are today, but we have to increase that a bit because we do not know what the interest rates are going to be when you go to the bond market. So we have to tell the voters what we think that, you know, with the maximum interest rate, that we're going to issue those bonds at. And with those three things that have to go in the bond call, then we'll be, we'll be able to tell you based on the current assessed values and that are out there, and I know you'll be getting again in March, what your assessed values are, what the levy rates will look like based on that size of a bond issue at that maximum interest rate, that maximum term of bond. And that helps the taxpayers see what, you know, it might cost for, we can give you these nice little schedules that show you, you know, if I have a hundred thousand dollars market value house that's appraised, that is assessed at sixty percent of that sixty thousand, what that tax would be based on those, the criteria in that bond issue. So that somewhat can give you, give the taxpayers an idea of what the tax increase is going to be. You know, what we hope for and what's happened is that the interest rates have always come in lower, so, you know, that it gets a little bit better than that, but, you know, you don't know until the day you issue the bond. So the day, after, after the bonds are, bond issue's passed and you get a successful yes vote from the taxpayers, then we go. It takes about another ninety days at least to issue those bonds. So it takes you about ninety days when, from the time you decide you're going to put it on the ballot, till it's on the ballot, another three months afterward. So, you know, it could be six to eight months later when you actually issue those bonds and you don't know what the interest rates are going to be until that day that we actually take that issue to market. And, you know, we, we do a lot of work once it's passed, because we have to prepare the documents to get it, to go out to the, to the people that are going to bid, the banks that are going to bid on the bonds, investment making firms, banks, so forth, that might bid on your bonds. So that's where a lot of the work starts, but we still help you in this pre-process until when you're deciding what you're going to put on the ballot. But that's what we're going to help you with. We're going to help you determine that. You have to decide the projects you want, how much you're willing to ask the taxpayers to approve, or the voters to approve. And we'll help you, anything we can in that process. Sometimes if you go to the SBA, you want us to go with you, and we'll do that too, but, you know, you have to lobby them or, you know, present your projects to them and what they're going to approve.
Any questions?
Just for clarification, before the bond election is held, we're paying you to do what?
You're not paying me anything.
So, so this little comment back here, number seven, and no compensation shall we do, financial advisor and the board tells to authorize issue and selling bonds?
Yeah, that's a good question. We, we kind of do this maybe crazy, because unless the bond issue passes and you actually issue bonds, we do not get paid. So anything we're helping you with tonight, coming to the meeting, or we're helping you with, until, until your bonds are actually issued, we do not pay, you don't owe us anything. But when the bond, you know, we issue the bonds, successful election, bonds get issued, then we get our compensation. So, you know, we're win-win for you there as far as, you know, if you decide not to put it on the ballot, or you decide to put it on the ballot and unfortunately wouldn't pass, then we would not be paid.
Same for us.
It says financial advisor, and I didn't know if I was missing anything here, okay? It was just financial advisor.
Matter of fact, if I'm just hard to believe, even old guys in law firms get reviewed every year. Today was mine. Two members of the executive committee were there, and I have, right now, two bond issues, yours and one other, we're working on, that will go to market, assuming they pass, in two thousand and thirteen. Those files were opened at the end of last year, and one of the executive committee members is in the energy group, did my interview, there were two of them. And he asked me about some of these accounts receivable, and he said, why aren't these things built? Well, he had these unbilled, and I said, well, those are bond issues. And he said, well, how long does it take? And I said, well, John, do you remember those two? He said, yeah, I saw those recently. I said, if we get paid, it'll be around March to May of two thousand and thirteen. And he just looked at me and shook his head and said, okay, moved on. We do it, and I can speak for Marie and Joe, we do it because we love schoolwork.
Yeah, that's fine.
We make more money, very candidly, on other bond issues, but there's nothing as satisfying as looking at schools that your bonds built. We recognize that, you know, we have obligations to our respective firms. We also recognize how lucky we have been and how many people have helped us get where we are, and we all have obligations and give back. And this, to our way of thinking, is one of the ways we can meet our give back that we, we feel we have an obligation to in our hearts. It's hard when you write it off sometimes when it doesn't go, but it's very satisfying, you know, to watch a building go up and kids going to a quality school, getting a chance.
Thanks. Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to our administrative section. Of course, we have A, an agreement with Raymond James and Associates, something attached documents. And I think we just had some, we just commented on this. B is, of course, an agreement with Bowles Rice, our legal services for the bond. C is to approve an agreement with Mission West Virginia, that's the healthy marriage program. Do you have any questions on C? D is memorandum of understanding with Lincoln County Health Department. Is there any questions on D?
Well, I'm assuming that all this that's in this memorandum of understanding will be shared with the schools, or has already been shared with the schools, like the delivery of medicines and vaccines and nursing and nursing aids and the facilities and the buses and so...
We had a discussion about that today at health to make sure that we are covering this with the schools, getting the actual plan and going over that with each of the schools.
You shouldn't already have...
We have an emergency... Well, we have a, we have an emergency plan. I think this is in addition to, this is a different emergency plan.
We're renewing this memorandum of understanding with the health department.
I mean, this would just kind of be updating what we are...
Updating. But as she said, we, we're asking them for a copy of the full plan so that we will know exactly what our school system is responsible, besides providing buses and space and...
It's a lot of logistics here.
Yes.
To deliver medicine and lots of other things here, I mean, that's not bad. I mean, I knew we, we always provided the facilities.
And they actually, last year and the year before, I guess they had a mock emergency drill. And went through the process, but we did talk about that today to get a copy of the plan to make sure that we go over this with each of the schools, so they know what's expected.
Any emergency contacts then, from the school system would be, you all would determine who those people would be?
All right. D is out of state travel for Lincoln County High School, band students, participating in Blacksburg.
Is that a school bus driver, a commercial bus driver?
It's a small group of students, they take their vehicles.
Students take their own vehicles?
The students don't, I mean, they're, the parents just runs.
I think there's six honor stand students.
Yeah, it's, it's a very small number of students that participate. They do this every year.
And these persons that will be driving, will they be approved by the board?
It'll be their parents.
Well, I mean, everyone's going to be driving, will they be, will the board approve them to drive these vehicles?
They already have to be a volunteer.
They may already be approved, I can check and see who it is. Some of these people may have already been approved at some point, a volunteer.
I know Mrs. Nelson had a whole group of her parents go through the training already this year, and I suspect that they will by JF one, check to make sure.
Well, I guess what I'm thinking of are the liability issues when you transport students and make sure that the boards would be covered up with some type of liability, if that means individuals had to be approved that were going to be driving. I mean, I don't know the answer, but I'd like for you all to research that to make sure we're covered.
So what are we going to do with D? Just go ahead, this is to approve the students. F, student transfer for the name of two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve school year from Cavlin Lincoln. G is West Virginia State University Heather Smith on thirty hours of observation, second semester. H is a Mount West Community College student to perform observation at West Ham. You all have heard A through H? You have any questions? More questions? Always in favor of approve items A through H? Please say aye. Aye? Or a no? The ayes have it. We have an item on the agenda two, it was to consider action on the item table on January the third, two thousand and eleven. And this is the use of space at Lincoln County High School for amateur boxing competition. And this motion would be to approve that. There was a motion to that. So is there a motion? If there is no motion, then this item dies. Okay, item dies on the floor. All right, comments concerning this?
We need to go into mediation to discuss the Hart property mediation, if you want to talk about the other two items before we go, before we do that.
Okay, the, when we do that, we got a phone call about the PKA, the entrance at the Hartz PKA. We're going to do, are we doing anything with that? I mean, is there anything that's going on with that as far as, are we making any changes to the entrance at the Hartz PKA right now?
What was our last email today?
Share with what you share with me.
The contractor's waiting for the rain to seep so he can get up there and revise that slope going into, and once he, once the blacktop subcontractor can get on site, they're ready to fix that and make that right. That's all we're waiting on.
Can you get blacktop this time of year?
Yes.
The blacktop plants, they've been told are going to be open through January on that, because of the weather, so.
It's not bad.
It's not as cold as it has been, so, yeah.
It's not as cold as it has been, so, yeah, it's years.
So you're going to see that it's repaired, the original, the original slope.
It's, the slope is too steep, because it comes off a banked curve on the existing highway.
I know, I drug really bad there.
So they're going to, the contractors made arrangements with all the subcontractors to make that happen, but the weather, I think,'s held up the blacktop contractor.
But as of right now, they're using another entrance, is that correct?
Yes, and I don't know much about that other entrance, I heard about that today, but I don't know much about that.
I think they've grabbled it, that's what I was told.
I think the state came in and grabbled another entrance, and I don't know how long it's...
That's not for the buses. The buses are not, yeah, it's not for buses.
Ms. Ferguson, how long do you think it will take for this?
I don't think they talked about doing it the next pretty day, which I was told is going to be a dry day tomorrow, but I don't know how long it is. I think it'd take about a day to fix it, so, once everybody gets started, so.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Guardrails.
I called the Department of Highways in Huntington again to see them, and that's why I was late, because I was waiting on him to call me back. Now, their traffic engineer told me that there would be no guardrails through there anywhere. But now, down at the lower, well, it'd be the upper end, the end towards, who should call it, the north end. It's really close to the road, and the kids come out of that entrance to go to their playground. But he said, according to the guidelines, that no guardrails were needed there whatsoever. And I was told by the traffic engineer for the Department of Highways before, and I don't have his name with me, I've got it written down at home, but that we could put the guardrails that we would have to pay for, that the board themselves would have to pay. So I don't know.
Why don't we just adopt a resolution, see if we can maybe get the state to do something first?
Mr. Butcher left, but he had told me he knew somebody that he thought he could get some guardrails through there, but...
Who properties are these guardrails? Where, whose property is it that they would sit on?
It would be the school's property. It's right in front of the school, right at the beginning, when if you're going towards Hartz.
I just knew the Department of Highways has a right of way of how many feet off the... I just didn't know it was on our property.
Any fences?
Well, what I was going to say, that when we talked to Dana today, and he has, he had spoken with Brian Webb, and that's Huntington, is where he's in?
The district supervisor.
District supervisor, and he pretty much said what you just said, that they have no intentions of footing a guardrail. But if we, the board, want to purchase the guardrail, I think he had actually quoted Dana a price of guardrail plus installation, but Dana didn't have that this morning when we talked about it, because, and I'm not clear if, when we, if we put the guardrail, we purchase it and they install it, would it be in the same place, or would it be over on our property? I don't know, I didn't get, I didn't get that sense of where it would be. Did you, when Dana was talking?
It can't come much on our property, because it would be right against the school.
So it'd have to be on the...
On the state road.
On the state road. But that's what he had, he had talked with Mr. Webb.
How far, how about the distance of it, how far are we talking?
How long?
Well, to me, if they would put even a 12-foot right there where the kids come out, it would be nice if it were longer. But just where the kids come out and go to the playground, if they put one there.
Let me ask you a question, is there any way we might be able to get some pictures? You know what I'm saying, like, get some pictures and have Dana come in and look at it, and just, you know, kind of explain, you know, because I, it's just, it's hard to visualize exactly where it's going to be, what's, and you kind of give us the time, and, you know, and maybe we could do something, maybe we have a resolution or whatever, probably after we look at that, see if we could go that route before we go in and buy anything.
Is this the same area that we moved the fence?
No.
Now, fencing is out back.
Okay, no fencing in front.
Well, I was told they were going, they were going to put a fence.
Part of the, we'll be fenced, okay.
Not the entire length of the property, but part of the...
Part. Is this, well, you don't know whether we're on that same area here?
No. I think we are.
Fans can't stop a car anywhere.
Well, I know, but I'm thinking about room, can you put a fence and put a guardrail in? I guess there's enough room to put both, I guess.
I just think we ought to get some pictures and look at it, and see what it's like, and, you know, where it's at, and kind of get, you know...
Dana called this evening, and gave me some number, and I forgot to do those to you.
Oh, okay.
And he had a price, $20 per linear foot for guardrail. As an example, 500 foot of guardrail would cost $10,000. And he understood that that was installation price.
500 foot's a pretty good piece down, and Dana said he would like to have it down through there, which I think would be great, to have it, because it'll be the area that's not fenced. If he's considering 500 foot, it would be the area that's not going to be fenced.
I don't think it would be 12 feet.
Well, now, I'm talking about 12 feet where the kids come out to go to the playground. That was my maintenance, because it's so close to the road. But now, 500 foot would go on down in front of the school, it would be nice.
That's just an example, I'm not sure if it's thought we needed that much, but that was just an example.
So we need more information.
You'd have to look at it probably, or like, like he said, pictures, to understand what it would be.
And Dana can explain.
But to me, $10,000, that's cheap for 500, but I think it's cheap.
Let's, let's get some pictures, look at it, and kind of...
Maybe he can talk to us next week.
Yeah, he can come and talk to us on the next week. You all agree? Okay? And I believe that's the last issue, except the Hartz property, and we'll have to go into executive session on that.